Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Thursday, December 5th, 2024, 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up, Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the role. Chair Darby.
Here.
Vice Chair Knights.
Here.
Supervisor Charles.
Here.
Supervisor McFarland.
Here.
Supervisor Nufo Glice.
Here.
And our student representative, Resika Siva Kumar.
Here.
Everyone is here.
Great. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube for viewing only. Also, this meeting will be video recorded for posting on the township website. In the room, there's a video camera installed for security purposes only. Prior to the meeting, an executive session was held to discuss litigation and land acquisition matters. So our first presentation of the night is Resika, our student representative, report.
Thank you. Starting this school year, graduating high school students proficient in more than one world language will be eligible to apply for the Pennsylvania Seal of Bilinguality, which can help them achieve college credit in some colleges. Students who meet the required academic criteria will be recognized in May of 2025. On December 10th and 11th, Keystone Testing will be held in Mathaeton High School and the middle school to test for proficiency in mathematics, English language, and biology. A free workshop will be held at Mathaeton High School on December 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for families seeking help to complete their free application for federal student aid or FAFSA. Those who need help with their application can sign up for this workshop on Mathaeton High School's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Resika. Next up is the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the Board of Supervisors meeting, November 21st, 2024. And there's two escrow releases, one for Crawford Estate and one for Moscarello at Cross Keys. And also accepting the phase update for Shanondale Phase 4. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any public comment? Board comment?
I have one board comment or question regarding the Moscarello at Cross Keys release 5. EJ, do you know if they got that electric charging station working?
Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you.
I did not know that, but Mike signaled to me. Mike knew the answer. Mr. Mazinski knew the answer to that. Thank you, Mr. Mazinski.
Just one other point of clarification out on that. On the Shanondale Phase 4, the memorandum issued by EJ in the section in Italex MPC, Section 508, there's a four-letter word in there that is referenced frequently. It's PLAT. Is that plan or is that plot? Or is it plat?
Plat.
It is plat.
Yeah. That's what it's referred to in the MPC.
Okay.
It's a plan, yeah.
I think it's Latin.
All my now.
Never mind.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor, and we've had comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So I'm gonna change up a little bit here for the on the agenda where we would like to do courtesy of the floor in regard to the Church Road project. We have a few visitors here that would like to do that, provide comments. So so please, when you come up to the podium, state your name, township, and no more than three minutes allotted.
My name is Robert Dodds, 3037 Walker Lane in Lower Providence. And the concern we have is that there's a new builder in the Church Road project. And we got a letter just the other week, last week, saying they're gonna start within two weeks. Now, the board agreed that there'll be a sidewalk that connects Walker Lane to the project, which would allow pedestrian traffic to go up through the new project into Eskey Park. The owner of the land that is in between the new project and Walker Lane has not been contacted yet. So that is a big problem. We fought real hard for that, and it was agreed to on the plan. And I just wanna make sure it happens. That's where, you know, it's a really dangerous walk for everyone along Church Road to get to Eskey Park. And it's been that way for a long time. It's gonna be a lot worse once the 26 new homes come in. So that's what, that's all I have to say.
I have a question for clarification. There's two properties. I think there is American Water property, and then there's also a residence. Are you referring to the resident?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, thank you. My name's Rick Pacella. I'm at 3029 Walker Lane. I just wanted to add on to what Rob was saying. It was my understanding that the sidewalk would be a prerequisite to the construction starting. And I thought that was something that was brought to our attention at an earlier board meeting, that it was agreed that the sidewalk would be done before the construction started. So I just wanted to add that because that's what the township told us.
We can verify that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gus Sertino, 3024 Walker Lane. I just wanna give a minute to coincide with Rob and Rick. You know, I'm a 22-year resident at 3024, raised three children there in the township. But the thing about that 3,000 block of Walker, we're kinda locked because we can almost see Eskey Park, you know, through the backside of it, but we really can't get there. There's no direct. Yeah, some of the kids have tried to go across the street for a small walkway, but then you gotta come around that bend. Then there's no walkway. If you try to do it, it's kinda dangerous. We've even noticed a lot of younger moms trying to do their strollers on it. And with that angle, it's very difficult. Now, that neighborhood has a lot of walkers, dog walkers, okay, young children. It's a new family thing. The access element from that block of Walker, just going straight across where the new construction would be, would be so valuable, you know, for an element of safety and convenience. You know, we really, really need that, so I'd like to mention it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just go ahead and line up.
I'll be the last one.
Yeah, okay, no worries.
Bruce Landis, 3035 Walker Lane. One thing, last thing to point out, that the board was particularly interested in this proposal for that sidewalk was that would actually grant contiguous sidewalk access between this facility and this park all the way up through to Eskey Park, which doesn't exist today. And that was particularly of note by the board at the time that decision was made. So just reminding you of that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Penny? Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Any other? Okay, all right.
So I just wanna confirm for all, first of all, I wanna thank you all for coming and bringing this to our attention. I just wanna confirm for all of you that it is, the construction of that walkway is a condition of approval. It is legally required of the developer. It will happen. We will follow up and figure out what the timing is. I do wanna clarify, however, that the final approval, it's a combination of a sidewalk and an asphalt, a paved asphalt trail, just due to kinda the topography and some trees, to avoid trees needing to be removed. It is gonna be a continuous connection, but it's, a portion of it's gonna be asphalt trail versus a traditional sidewalk. So just wanna make sure you were all aware of that.
And EJ, is it fair to say that we've gotten verbal agreement with American Water on their portion?
Yes.
And we also have that verbal agreement with the homeowner?
That was my understanding, but we're gonna follow up on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Dave Laganelle. I am the owner of the resident that you're up. And I, you do not have my permission at all.
Any last minute? Okay, well, thank you all for coming and bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
All right. And you can feel free to stay. We're not kicking you out. Okay. All right. Okay. So next up is old business. First up is the consideration of Resolution Number 2024-45, the adoption of 2025 budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government. And EJ and Rich have more on this.
I'll start. We're trying to limit Richard's speaking time to that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through a very brief presentation because we kinda did the more detailed overview at the previous meeting. We did have a series of budget workshops, as we always do, in September and October. These were advertised and open to the public. I'm just gonna try to move away from the static.
Anyone else on?
I don't think anyone else's mics are on. Can you guys turn the, turn that mic off? I don't know if that's adding to the static at all. So just a quick recap. We started out at Budget Workshop 1 in September. We made some changes that reduced the deficit to by 127,000. At the second Budget Workshop in October, we made some additional changes and adjustments that reduced the deficit by another $207,000. We gave a final presentation at the first meeting in November on the 7th, which called for a budget at the time with a deficit of approximately 309,000 and included an increase in the general fund tax millage to cover that deficit. So that budget was advertised on November 7th. Under the Second Class Township Code, it's required to be available for public inspection for a minimum of a 20-day comment period. It's now December 5th, so we've obviously met that 20 days. Since the budget was advertised on November 7th, no changes have been made. In addition, during that time, we have received no public comment, questions, or feedback on the budget. Just to provide a brief comparison to where we are this year versus where we were at the same point last year, it's a decrease in the overall deficit of approximately 476,000. But I do wanna point out, which I'll talk about a little bit more on the next slide, that the, and you can actually advance to the next slide, Paul, thank you, that the general fund does include some additional long-term funding that we have not budgeted for in the past to get a start on a capital equipment replacement plan as well as increased funding to the road program. Those two amounts take up about $175,000 of the $309,000 increase. So if you back those out to actually get an apples-to-apples comparison of the operating budget from this year to last year, it's about $650,000 less. So it's a, it's an operating increase of about $135,000 compared to last year. Some of the other highlights with the advertised budget, assuming the tax, the general fund tax millage increase, there is now no general fund deficit because of the increase that will balance the budget. As I mentioned before, there's an increase of approximately $100,000 for road, our road program to mill and overlay township roads to help us kinda play catch-up and hopefully over time start to get ahead of that replacement program, which we've been playing catch-up on for quite a while as well. It includes $75,000 of funding for Phase 1 of a long-term capital replacement program, which is something that Rich has been working on with the department heads and is something that we have been planning for, but have never had the funds to fund. So we are now in a position where we're able to start jump-starting that program. There's an increase of funding of approximately $20,000 for the library. There's an increased funding of approximately $300,000 in the debt service fund, which also requires a millage increase for the debt service millage in anticipation of a borrowing next year. It also includes all of the required contractual increases for the police under their contract, as well as the contractual increases for AFSMI under their collective bargaining agreement. AFSMI is the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees and covers primarily our Public Works Department. And then it also includes, you know, all other non-contractual and non-optional expenses. So, you know, a lot of work was done on this budget, as is the case every year. And we're proud of the fact that if you actually look at the operating budget of the township and compare it to past years, we're really in a position now where we're able to start getting ahead, and we're not playing catch-up as much. And even, you know, the increases in just the collective bargaining agreements for our two unions alone represent an increase of 4% to 5% in the budget, but yet the overall increase is significantly less than that, which means we were able to find some other areas for savings and to make some difficult decisions, to make some cuts. So this slide represents the actual numbers from the advertised budget. As I mentioned, the millage increase in the general fund represents, or provides for an additional $309,299 of additional general fund revenue, which balances the general fund, $20,000 of additional library fund revenue through the library tax, and $300,000 of additional debt service revenue through the debt service tax. And then the actual millage numbers you can, you can see on the screen there for the, for those three funds that are receiving increases. So as a result of all that, assuming the board adopts it as presented, the remaining deficit in the general fund will be $0. In other words, it will be a balanced budget. So just comparing what the impact will be on the residential tax bill in the township based on the average assessed property in the township, it'll be about a $61 increase in the annual bill. So with that being said...
Can I stop you there for a minute? I'm not gonna, you know, I've commented frequently about my concerns over our lack of revenue increase potential for all the reasons we've discussed and looking at this increase of 11%, which I believe is the third double-digit increase in a row. And while some of the programs and certainly what Richard's efforts have been, are very admirable, the fact is that we are still raising the taxes to the township, and I think we need to take a deeper look at some costs, one of which we got information on last month, which is the amount of money we're spending to support and service the Montgomery County facilities, which probably, if we didn't have that cost, would mean that the general fund aspect of this would not be necessary. So Richard's done a great job of getting that added down, but I think there's more we could do there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree. I think there's only one slide left. So this, this is a table of comparisons that has been used historically, I think even prior to my time in Lower Providence, of comparable municipalities and their millage rates. So just to kinda see what the impact would be on where we fall in the table with this proposed budget, essentially, assuming that there are none of the other municipalities on this list, make any changes to their taxes, we would, we would basically jump one municipality, and that's Limerick Township, on this ranking of tax rates.
If I may, just one comment on this one. The delta that we're creating by increasing taxes, and I look at all these Upper Providence, almost within 1,000, the population's the same, they're right next door to us. So competitively, with respect to housing and attractiveness, there are best comparison. They're on that chart at 2.5. That 2.5 in their website will not increase this year and has not been increased since 2021. So the delta between us and them is growing and will continue to grow, which will make a decision about housing for people looking at comparative towns and comparative schools. The long-term effect of this, not this one raise, but this direction, is gonna have an impact on house prices. Because if you have to pay higher taxes for a comparable home, you're gonna not wanna pay as much money for that same comparable home. Thank you.
So that's, that's all I have for the presentation for this evening. So take any additional questions from the board, and then we would request adoption of the budget resolution.
I do have one comment along with what Peter stated, is looking at the Montgomery County facilities and the burden an Eagleville Hospital creates on our township. You know, is, there's something we can do to offset the expenses for those facilities? It's, it is a burden to our township. That's it.
Any other comments? Okay. All right. Thank you, EJ. Rich, is there any additional comment you wanna add?
No.
Okay, all right, okay. EJ did a good job? Okay, all right. We thank you for all the planning and future planning. And this is, you know, we're looking at the future as well. Because our township is old and infrastructure, we're trying to make sure that our township does not fall apart because the sewer and roads and all the things. So thank you for planning for the future. Of course, no one likes raising taxes, but looking to the future, we may not have to do that. So thank you for doing that.
Of course.
All right. So next is making a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-45, adopting the 2025 budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any public comment? Make sure it's on.
Kieran Mooney, still from Lower Providence.
Okay.
So my question to the board and the Montgomery thing, thank you, that is an issue. So last few years, prices and everything is through the roof for everyone. Everybody's feeling it. So a lot of families, us included, we gotta pinch pennies. We gotta budget, right? We gotta cut some stuff out. It's wants and needs, wants and needs is what it comes down to. That's the world, that's my world that I live in today, is wants and needs. I don't do a lot of extra stuff, the money's not there. So my question to the, to the board is, so if we have to trim the fat, right? And we have to work on a budget and live within our means, shouldn't the board have to do the same thing, right? So when the taxes go up, it's like, we hear it every time with the politicians is, and I'm not calling you politicians, but this is what we hear, is, you know, build more houses, it's gonna help with the taxes, never does, right? So my, it's spending, spending, spending. Lancaster County, I believe it is, I don't know how many years they've gone without raising their taxes. How come we can't do, if we wanna be jet-setters, how come we can't figure out a way to take care of the people of the township that are struggling? So when the taxes do go up, because they're coming up, school board's gonna be going up, county taxes going up, now local taxes going up, correct? So in that time, we're gonna have to trim the fat more. We're gonna have to really dive in to what we spend our money on, wants and needs, wants and needs. So I'm asking you guys to do the same thing. How do we, how do I find out where our money's being spent? Because I know that you've got an assistant. There's some positions that were, were added on to the tune of a lot of money. Where do I find out that you guys are being as frugal for us because we're the ones that are gonna have to come up with the money? And then when it goes through, so why doesn't the township have that same? You know, money's not gonna fix stuff. It's really not. And then more programs are not gonna fix stuff. How come we don't sharpen the pencil, right? And see where we can, as a township, to save some people that are even struggling is... It's affecting them more than me. Why don't we sharpen our pencil, figure it out? Because it, the people are hurting, and it just seems like politicians just wanna keep raising taxes, keep raising taxes. Our roads suck. Our roads suck, and they've sucked for a really long time. The township is going down the drain. It is. So I just ask you guys to be frugal. I'm not good with money. I give it to Jen, I give it to my wife because she's, makes it happen. So I'm just asking, there's a lot of people that are really hurting right now. So whatever we could look at to, and the county, huge. Eagleville Hospital, was it last year 600 times that the police had to go there, you know, pay for it? Thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Can I make a comment? The size of the staff of the township, wasn't a number of years ago larger than it is now?
By a pretty significant margin, yeah. I think, I mean, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it was, I think, like, if you go back 10 years to now, it was something like six to eight more full-time staff than, than we have now.
Okay, all right, okay.
And with full-time staff come salaries, benefits, pension, all of that.
That's the point I'm getting at. And the police department, love the police department, okay? But that's a large part of our budget, isn't it?
Almost 50%.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the police department is one place where we added a resource because we did the analysis, and I'm making up the numbers, so give me a little leeway. But the population of the township had gone up, let's say, 10% over 20 years, you know, just roughly. But the police department's size had not increased, so we added one...
It had actually gone down.
It had gone down. So we, in the last cycle last year, we added one police officer, you know, and that increased it like 3%, even though the population had gone up. So it doesn't always seem like it, but we do take it seriously. But we can always look, you know, more and keep that in the front of our minds.
I wasn't trying to be difficult. I'm just saying like...
No, this is great. Yeah, yeah. And we're empathetic to that, for sure, because we all pay taxes, some of us more than others. And, you know, I just wanna reiterate that we did have, like, workshop, three workshops, where the departments came with all their, their wants, right? And so we did have to say no to some of those wants, too. So that's, that's where we did, you know, kind of say, you know, we can't do this right now, unless the taxes would have been raised even more. So, you know, we're definitely mindful of the community and, and what's going on right now.
And one other small factoid is that our operating budget goes up less than the rate of inflation. So, you know, if inflation, I think inflation last year was 2.6%, I think our operating budget is up 2.4%. So we're... 2.2? Yeah, so we're trying to track it underneath the rate of inflation.
And one more comment. I think what we're trying to do also is pursuing grants. I mean, we got, what, over $2 million worth of grants? That helps with us to, you know, yes, we've raised taxes, but without that $2 million, for example, for the storm water lining pipe project, you know, would we have to raise it more? So I think we're aggressively pursuing grants to try to keep costs down. And that's gonna be a yearly thing. We're gonna keep, I mean, for years, we didn't get many grants. Now, we got $2 million, and next year, we're gonna be pursuing more. And that is, a lot of it's for infrastructure improvement, yes. And having the assistant manager... And having the assistant manager has produced $2 million in grants, and we're going for more. But we're going to improve Redtail Park, the storm water management, et cetera.
And make sure our roads are good.
Yeah.
And the storm water one, that's another really good one, because, you know, I can imagine, you can appreciate this, like if we let the storm water pipes decay, you know, then to replace them, you have to like rip up the road, put new pipes in. But what they did was, they basically shot them with, like an expandable liner, that basically, yeah, cure in place. And so it was a significant amount of money, but it will allow those pipes to last another 20 years or so. And so we're trying to be smart with how we do some of these bigger ticket items, and looking at replacing a truck, you know, when the maintenance costs get so high where you're spending all this money repairing it, okay, maybe it's time to get another truck, you know, that kind of thing.
I just want to say more, I wasn't trying to come at you, I hope you don't take that.
No.
All I was trying to say is, everybody's hurting in this thing, and I don't have a problem with paying taxes if we see a return on our taxes. If we're, if we see a return on, like say it's for roads or whatever, I see a lot of the storm, the drains getting done, cool. But as long as we're seeing a return, I mean, we don't have a problem. The police, if they need new cars, they should have the best of anything to make the tools to help them with their job. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying is, there's certain places, and honestly, some stuff that we cut out for our budget, or it's, it just made sense, and it's like not even a thing anymore. It's like we're the United States of consumers is what we are. But there's a lot of people just living, you know, hand and mouth right now, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any further board comments? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, comments, and now for the vote, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Four one. Next is the consideration of Resolution 2024-46, establishing the 2025 real estate tax millage rate, and EJ?
Yes, it's the same information I just went over, it's just the second of two resolutions for it.
Okay, just a formality. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-46, establishing the 2025 real estate tax millage rate.
I'll second.
Any public comment? Board comment?
Yeah, I just have, I just have a question, because I was looking into this.
The real estate millage?
The millage.
Okay, go ahead.
Kieran Maloney, still at Lower Providence. So the millage rates, they take the taxable property in the township, right? One to 1,000, correct? So prices on houses and property, well, not so much, prices on houses right now, they're not worth what they're going for, we all know that. So the reason I say that is, so you base your, you base the millage rate, how you come up with your, your equation, through the property values of the taxable in our township, correct? So the prices on all the houses went up, which honestly, they're not, it's going to correct itself, it has to at some point. But the people living in them houses, a lot of them, their, their, the pay didn't go up. So somebody could have a house, barely being able to afford the house, you know what I mean? Because, and then now, we're going to figure out taxes on houses and property that's not really worth what it's going to say on paper, but these people don't have another way to add a little bit of money, they can't tax anyone, they can't tax someone to get that money in order to pay for their house, right? So he, you guys are in a tough spot, like I said, but it is, I'm trying to understand the millage thing, but what I'm saying is, did I basically get it close?
Not quite.
All right.
And so, and it's a, it's a great question, it's a very common misconception, that tax rate is assessed to the, is applied to the assessed valuation, not the sale price, not the fair market value. So in Montgomery County, there hasn't been a county-wide reassessment since at some point in the 90s. So our average assessed residential property is about 157,000. They're worth more than that, it's, the assessed value only represents somewhere in the range of 40 to 50% of the actual fair market value. So it doesn't take into account what a, a new, a new home sells for, or what a, an old home resales for, it's based on the assessed value, which unless you're making improvements to your home, then that triggers a reassessment, but otherwise, the homes haven't been assessed for years, yeah.
Thanks.
Good question, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, and public comment, any further board comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay, four one. All right, now on to new business. This is the consideration of reimbursement resolution number 2024-47. EJ, you're speaking a lot tonight, go ahead.
Well, that's typical. This reimbursement resolution essentially provides the board with the opportunity to reimburse itself for costs incurred associated with a borrowing in advance of the borrowing itself. So we've been talking a lot about municipal complex project, a municipal building project, and, and the need to finance that through municipal borrowing at some point next year. The budget that was just adopted included some of those additional costs. So we haven't gone out for the borrowing yet, we're in the process of exploring that, but basically what this resolution does is, any costs we incur between now and the actual borrowing, we're able to reimburse ourselves for those costs through the borrowing itself. And in fact, it's retroactive 60 days back from, if you adopted tonight, it's retroactive 60 days ago from now. So any costs we've incurred in terms of legal fees, architecture, fees, engineering, design, any of those things can all be reimbursed through the borrowing. The resolution in no way obligates the board to do any borrowing, it just says that if you ultimately do a borrowing, you can reimburse yourself for those costs incurred. So this was drafted by the Township's Bond Council, it provides for a borrowing of up to $30 million, which as, as we know, was kind of a rough estimate for the design that was previously presented and discussed a couple of times over the course of the past year. However, the board has asked staff, we don't, I'll just say, we're hoping that it's going to be a bit less than that, the board has instructed staff to look into other options to reduce that cost significantly, but it basically provides for a not-to-exceed amount, so it could be significantly less than that, but it's up to $30 million. And that's what the resolution is.
Let me turn my, hold on here. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution number 2024-47. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any public comment? Any board comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is the renewal of Huff Associates contract for recycling data collection and 904 recycling grant application. EJ?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is just a request to renew the existing contract with Huff Associates, who kind of serves as our recycling consultant, but what that entails is, basically, they collect all of the data and do the reporting that's required by the state, they submit it to DEP, we get an annual grant, it's called the 904 grant, it's essentially a performance grant that's based on the total tonnage of recycling that's collected in the township. It's a three-year contract, there's no price increase based on the expiring contract, it's a flat $7,500 a year, they get half of that fee upon the filing of the Montgomery County reports, and they get the remaining half upon filing the DEP performance grant applications. And I would just note that since we have contracted with Huff Associates to do this work for us, our annual grant receipts have more than doubled. So there is a cost, $7,500 a year, however, before we brought them on, we were getting, when we were kind of doing it ourselves in-house, we were getting grants in the range of 20,000 to 25,000 a year. Since we've brought them on, we've exceeded $50,000 every year, in fact, I think one year there was a spike closer to 70 or 75,000, so it's certainly well worth the investment.
Any questions for EJ? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of Huff Associates contract for recycling data collection and 904 recycling grant applications, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any public comment? Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right. So now for announcements and meetings. So tomorrow, we have our community tree lighting in Winter Wonderland, which starts at 6:30 PM. So just to let everybody know, the tree has relocated to up the field a little bit, near the football field, there's lights around there right now, so you'll be able to see where to go. Santa will be arriving approximately 7:00 PM to light the tree. The caring and sharing holiday food and gift drive is underway, it looks like a lot of people have taken the angel tree tags off, and we're doing well here. So supermarket gift cards, monitoring, monetary donations, and non-perishable food items are appreciated, and not sure if they still need anything from the angel tree, it looks like we've done a good job as a community to help folks in need for the holidays. Also, we are partnering with Chad, Chadwick's Restaurant to have a community holiday dinner, which will be held on Wednesday, December 18th, from 4:30 to 7:30. This is open to all township residents, and details can be found on LPTRAC.com and on lowerprovidence.org. So hopefully you'll join us.
Pre-registration is required.
Yes, pre-registration is required, there is a limit as well. So first, meetings, the Sewer Authority will meet on Monday, December 9th at 4:30. The Environmental Advisory Council meeting is on December 16th at 7:00. Library Board meeting is December 16th at 7:00 as well, and Parks and Rec Board meeting is December 17th at 7:00 PM. Zoning Hearing Board is December 18th at 7:00 PM. Lastly, the Board of Supervisors is looking for qualified residents interested in serving on the township's various boards and commissions. Details and instructions on submitting a letter of interest and resume can be found on the township website, lowerprovidence.org. So tell a friend, and tell a friend. So, any comments from the board, or any other business? Okay.
Just one, sorry, just one quick note, I wanted to let everyone know, I've talked about this before, but the Regional Sewer Authority, which in Hurricane Ida, lost power, Pico lost power, and so to avoid that possibility, the board has invested a little over $2 million in standby generators, either one of which could operate the sewage treatment plant during a storm for, well, forever, because it's diesel-fired, so, so there's complete certainty that there will not be an issue that would then potentially, in fact, affect the Schuylkill River where the clean water is, is now released. Thank you.
That's great. Any other comments, business? Okay, great. Now we have another courtesy of the floor, we did one earlier, a special one, and now if there's anyone that would like to come up and make a comment, and not to exceed three minutes per person.
I should have brought Woodruff in. Good evening, esteemed members of Lower Providence Supervisors. We recently learned of an incident involving our township solicitor, Mr. Michael Clark. Were you the solicitor for Falls Township, Mr. Clark? Because I want to make sure that I have the right person.
I am indeed.
Okay, thank you. Where his words in Falls Township stirred up controversy in 2019, comments made about first responders and children went beyond the pale, to be specific. Let's look at this. Oh my God.
We are aware of the incident, we are aware, yeah.
So you knew, so I'm going to make everyone else aware. So the Falls Township Board of Supervisors have suspended their solicitor after comments he made were caught on a recording during a meeting. Michael Clark, the solicitor for the township, was suspended late last week by the firm Rudolph Clark, that he's a partner and will continue to serve the township according to sources. During the portion of the June Supervisors meeting that featured recognition of elementary school students who served as the police chief for a day in law enforcement award ceremony, Clark made an off-the-cuff comment that Falls Township was constantly applauding people for doing their jobs. He added that public work staff was just as important, I agree. On delivering services, according to video, audio that was reviewed by LevittownNow.com, Clark, the awards that recognized Falls Township officers at the meeting covered a number of years of recognition, an officer who suffered a life-threatening injury while on duty, those who took part in a homicide investigation, law enforcement who handled robbery, responders to a shooting call, detectives who investigated a drug delivery resulting in a death case, in a death, an officer who saved a man who was bleeding to death after an attempted suicide. Clark also made an off-the-color joke about kids coming up looking for their parents, and that he may be their father. So that board suspended him. They put their foot down and they were done. So I've seen you give awards this year to cops, and I think that's awesome, because I think what they do every day, and we can all agree, except for you probably, but we, they go out every day, put their lives on the line for us, they don't even know us, but they do that. And the confidence that this, that this solicitor does not share the same values that we have, that we talk about, that you all the time, the values that we have, we love our, we have one of the finest police forces in Pennsylvania, right? And so if, did you know before you hired him about this?
You got 20 seconds left, just.
What? I'm asking that we do, see, I can't do this in three minutes. So I just wanted to make the people aware, that I don't know if you did know his views about law enforcement and EMS, because this town, we love law enforcement and our EMS, okay? But now that you do know, would you have hired him? I know you want to answer that question, and that's fine.
Your time's up.
Have a good night.
With that, meeting adjourned.